All right, I'd like to welcome everybody and call the meeting of the Smith County Board of Supervisors to order. The first thing on our agenda is the public hearing for the county tax rate. So we will now open the public hearing. Lisa, do you want to read the?
Yes. Notice of Proposed Real Property Tax Increase, Smith County, Virginia. Notice hereby given that the county of Smith, Virginia proposes to increase property tax levies. Number one, assessment increase. The total assessed value of real property excluding additional assessments to do construction or improvements to property exceeds last year's total assessed value of real property by 5%. Number two, lowered rate necessary to offset increased assessment. A tax rate that would levy the same amount of real estate taxes last year but multiplied by the new total assessed value of real estate with the exclusion mentioned above would be .69 per $100 of assessed value. This rate would be known as lowered tax rate. Number three, effective rate increase. The county of Smith, Virginia proposes to adopt a tax rate of .74 per $100 of assessed value. The difference between the lowered tax rate and the proposed tax rate would be .05 per $100 or 7.2%. The difference will be known as the effective tax rate increase. Individual property taxes may, however, increase at a percentage greater than or less than the above percentage. Number four, proposed total budget increase. Based on the proposed real property tax rate and changes in other revenues, the total budget of the county of Smith may exceed last year's by 3.9%. The proposed tax rate of .74 per $100 has been the county's tax rate for real property since 2012. The increase in revenue is due to the increase in assessed value of real property and is not produced by an increase of the rate at which taxes are levied. A public hearing on the increase will be held Tuesday, June 30, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. in the Boardroom of Smith County Administration Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, 24354. All citizens have the right to attend a public hearing and comment on the proposed real property tax increase for fewer than three more time limits as shall be established by the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors are not obligated to adopt the proposed tax rates but may modify them as it deems necessary. The county's Budget Committee recommended operating budget for fiscal year 2021 is based on the adopted rate of .74 per $100 of assessed value. In compliance with the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-786-8315 at least 24 hours prior to the hearing. By order of the Board of Supervisors, Smith County, Virginia, Aaron Sizemore, interim county administrator.
Do we want to read the rules?
Yes, ma'am. You can read the rules under the Smith County Rules and Procedures amended January 9, 2018, Section 6.2, Public Hearings. In instances in which persons address the board through the chairperson without first having been allotted a specific time on the agenda, they shall limit their remarks as follows, except in extraordinary circumstances. Number one, person speaking for himself or his immediate neighborhood, three minutes. Number two, person speaking for an organization whose membership is representative of an entire district, five minutes. Number three, person speaking for an organization whose membership is representative of the entire county, ten minutes. And number four, except in emergency circumstances, no action shall be taken by the board following a public hearing, and the issue shall be continued until the next regular meeting.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
We will now open up the public hearing for public comment. On the sign-up sheet, we don't have anyone who has signed up, but is anyone here that would wish to speak? If no one wishes to speak, we will now close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for Community Development Block Grant. We will now open the public hearing. Lisa, do you want to read?
Yes, ma'am. Second public hearing notice. The Board of Supervisors of Smith County will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 30, 2020, at 5:15 p.m. or soon thereafter in the Boardroom of Smith County Administration Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, 24354, to solicit public input on local community development in relation to the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, proposal to be submitted to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for the Smith County Food Pantry Assistance Project. Residents are encouraged to attend. The project proposal will include the following activities: funding for the purchase of food, equipment, masks, gloves, storage units, et cetera, to help further efforts of Smith County food pantries to feed families in need affected by COVID-19 pandemic. Information on the amount of funding available, the requirement on benefit to low and moderate income persons, eligible activities and plans to minimize displacement and provide displacement assistance as necessary, will be available. Citizens will also be given the opportunity to comment on the county's past use of CDVG funds. All interested citizens are urged to attend. For additional information, contact Aaron Sizemore, which is 767-833-298. Comments and grievances can be submitted in writing by mail to 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, 24354, or by email to county administrator@smithcounty.org prior to the public hearing. For Virginia Relay, TTY, dial 711. In compliance with the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-786-8315 at least 24 hours prior to the hearing. By order of the Board of Supervisors, Smith County, Virginia, Aaron Sizemore, interim county administrator.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the rules.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. We will now open up for public comment. And the first person on here is Raymond, and I'm sorry, I cannot...
Cross.
What?
Cross.
Cross. Raymond Cross. 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 Cross.
I want to thank you all for letting me be here.
Mr. Cross, if you wouldn't mind to just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cross. Saltville, Virginia. I live here in the Bay of that Food Pantry. That Bay of that Food Pantry was started about 2007 with five families. Over the year, we had moved to over 400, 500, a mother. And we're doing pretty good to this part of here. And we just have all the money to see like they pay us. And we push out any help that we can get. Thank you all.
Thank you. And Brian.
Reed.
Who?
Reed.
Oh, Brian Reed. We know you.
All right. I guess I'm...
Welcome, Brian.
I'm Brian Reed, the Deputy Director of Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. And with the help of John Graham and the Directors of the four food pantries, we've been kind of driving this bus for this CDVG application. So this is the second of two required public hearings that the state requires to be eligible to request funding. They have $6.5 million in COVID response money. It's very specific on what it can be used for, and feeding of low, moderate income families is one of those activities. So with the help of John Graham, we've started a food pantry management team. We've been meeting at the Planning District Commission for, I guess, two months, three, two, three, something like that, three months, and determined that if we're going to request this free money, we might as well shoot for the moon. So the application that hopefully after tonight's resolution by the Board of Supervisors that we will be submitting is for $440,000, which will be $100,000 for each of the four food pantries to purchase safety equipment, additional food, refrigerators, freezers, whatever they need to expand their services during this COVID-19 pandemic. And to date, before all this started, those four food pantries are providing healthy meals to 3,800 residents in this county. So the impact of this grant will probably be seen for two or three years down the road with what these food pantries can do with that fund. Any questions? Any questions from the board?
I think it's a great program.
Yeah. And you guys have a resolution in front of you. The number in there is up to 700,000 because that's the cap, and figured it just a general number. Because we didn't know until actually today, before the power went out, exactly how much money we were going to request.
Right. And I think Ms. Gill is going to read that resolution for us, Brian. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing and then have a reading of the resolution.
And I'm going to take this off so everybody can hear me. I feel like I'm mumbling. Whereas the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, is soliciting applications for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, COVID-19 Response Program, to fund local community improvement projects. And whereas, the Smith County Board of Supervisors and the Food Pantry Management Team has determined that there is a need and community support for a CDVG project to address the needs of Smith County food pantries during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, the Smith County Board of Supervisors has met the citizen participation requirements of the program by conducting two public hearings that were properly advertised in the newspaper as required by the CDVG program guidelines, and therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors wishes to apply for up to $700,000 in CDVG funds to address the needs of the local food pantries. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors authorizes the county administrator to sign and submit all appropriate documents for submittal of the CDVG application. Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adopt that resolution, please.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Ratliff, this is second. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the FY 2021 county budget. And I'll read the resolution. The Smith County Budget Fiscal Year 2020-2021. Whereas, the Smith County Board of Supervisors has properly prepared a budget plan for the county operations...
Give them a chance to...
Thank you all.
So the rest of them can hear what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah. She asked.
Now, who are they?
They were here for the food pantry.
Oh, good.
Just thank you for coming, I guess, and tell them they can go for the morning.
We would like to thank all of you all for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yes, we're glad to support that.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to the stage.
I'll bet.
Thank you.
Hit me in the room, you know.
No, I could be there, honestly.
It's hard to hear when they're all...
Of course it is, yeah.
Thank you. I feel like I'm smiling at everybody and saying thank you, and they can't see it.
You have to punch your smile.
I know. I love to.
I'm not like that. Thank you. Dale Grover's not like that.
Okay. Well, I think we'll start this reading over again. That kind of emptied our boardroom. For those of you who have still left, let me carry on.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, for filling our room.
Yeah, but that's good participation. We like to see that. Okay, so this is the resolution for the Smith County Budget Fiscal Year 2020-2021. Whereas, the Smith County Board of Supervisors has properly prepared a budget plan for county operations, maintenance, capital outlay, and debt service for fiscal year 2020-2021, and has advertised and held the required public hearings required for the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2503, as amended. And whereas, the Smith County Board of Supervisors pursuant to said authority now proposes to adopt the attached budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. Now therefore be it resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors sets forth and approves the Smith County Budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 in the amount of $94,209,332. Be it fully resolved, the approval of this budget shall not constitute an appropriation of funds. Adopted this the 30th day of June, 2020. The motion to approve.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt that resolution.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes with a count of four to two. Next on the agenda is the county ordinance, Section... Is it 41-13, Aaron?
No, ma'am. I actually made a mistake in the agenda packet. I had included the wrong code, the code that I passed out just before the meeting, which is going to be 15.2-925 is the actual code section that we will be discussing, and I apologize after that section.
That's okay. Do you want to read it?
Yes, I can. It says, "It's a regulation of assemblies or movement of persons or vehicle under certain circumstances." And it reads, "Any locality may empower the chief law enforcement officer to regulate, restrict, or prohibit any assembly of persons or the movement of persons or vehicles if there exists an imminent threat to any civil commotion or disturbance in the nature of a riot which constitutes a clear and present danger. In such circumstances, the governing body may convene immediately in a special meeting in an act and emergency ordinance or ordinances for such purposes, notwithstanding any contrary provisions of any charter or under the general law." So if it's okay, what I would really like is for the sheriff maybe to speak to this because it's obviously affecting him and his ability to do things.
Right. Welcome Sheriff Shuler.
Chip Shuler, Sheriff of Smith County. Basically what this is, and you can look at how old it is, it was in the '60s, '68, when there were some riots situations going on then, so when the General Assembly enacted the end of it. What I would be asking for is date-specific and location-specific. We're most concerned about this Friday at the courthouse. That's basically going to be my responsibility, although I'll be helping the town throughout the town of Marion, it's all my jurisdiction as well. But basically, my manpower is going to focus on the courthouse, the property there, and the safety of our citizens, which is paramount. Nowhere does it say that we'll protect property with deadly force anymore. That's not acceptable. It's nothing that I'll be asking for here. But the potential of violence is paramount at this point. Again, some intelligence that lets us know that we got several groups that will be standing in a foreign town this Friday. I pray it wouldn't happen, but you know, stick your head in the sand and pretend something's not going to happen and we'll suffer from it. This code section would give me the authority if I can gather enough intelligence quick enough to maybe disperse the group of our property without having to call it an unlawful assembly. If we have to wait till we call it an unlawful assembly, we're past people getting hurt when things happen to our property. So you know, this has given somebody a lot of power, and I didn't even know this code existed until a call with attorney brought it to my attention. But I think it might be perfect for our situation. In no way am I prohibiting anybody's free right to exercise their First Amendment rights. Peacefully protesting is peacefully protesting. If I can prevent people from getting hurt or killed, that's my job. Our citizens are at the top of the list, but also the men and women that work under my badge are important too. So I would ask that the board would grant me this authority for Friday at the courthouse property, specific. I might use it and I might not. I mean, it's just, I think things will dictate what we do and how... It may get away from us so quickly that I won't have the opportunity to do it, but at least I'd have that. So I'll answer any questions anybody's got.
Madam Chairman, Chip, does the courthouse, do you need anything besides the courthouse? You want all county property or just... I'm all police.
Yeah, right now, we're just going to be focusing on the... That apparently, I don't even like to use the term, but ground zero, that must be the hot topic of the day. And hopefully, you know, we're hoping that we can keep the group separated apart. But you know, right now, that's... My staff will be focused in on the courthouse.
I know that, you know, there's a lot of things going on in Richmond, and they've changed mayors up there, and they've tried to limit the law and stuff, and we don't need to tie anybody's hands here as far as law enforcement goes when it comes to...
I have a clarification question. This enactment of this code will free you up of us having to come together and say, yes, you have permission to do it.
Yes, yeah. I wouldn't have to try to call around and get at least four of you to do it for me at that point in time. I'm just trying to get ahead of that.
Got you.
I'm just trying to get ahead of the law here.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I think it's important that this board keeps the safety of our community and anyone who's trying to exercise their First Amendment right, regardless if they differ from somebody else's. The safety of the people doing it and the safety of the people that live in this community is of utmost importance. I've received several emails and calls today asking what we're going to do to ensure that that happens. And I also feel that those folks need to recognize authority and be respectful to that. And my goal is for these officers to go home to their families at night.
I agree.
Because that's what their families desire. And I, too, want the protesters to go home to their families at night. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion that the board would grant the sheriff the authority provided in Section, Code Section 15.2-925 in the Code of Virginia.
May I? Before this motion. I've had a chance to look at this statute previously. Not my mask, but the statute. And I just want to give a word of legal caution in that the statute as written is perhaps, maybe, probably constitutionally invalid. It was based on a test, the Schink Test, the Clear and Present Danger Test, and that was the law in 1968. That was overruled a year after this statute was passed. And this statute, I can't find an example of any municipality in Virginia actually using it, and no case law actually interpreting it. And frankly, I don't think, in practice, I think the unlawful assembly is not that much different than this. That said, you can pass it, and it's really how you apply it as to whether or not, you know, you can't be sued for passing an unconstitutional ordinance, but if you apply it in an unconstitutional manner, that is the problem. So I just wanted to have that noted for the record, and I'm happy to discuss it further if you'd like more guidance on that. But I just wanted to raise that point that there could be some legal weaknesses in the statute.
Madam Chairman, may I just turn to your place?
Yes.
Sure.
I get everything you say, but are we, can we not make a special county ordinance in above this, since we do have ordinances?
It all depends on what the ordinance says. You can. But for instance, if you're trying to put a prior restraint on speech, if ahead of time you decide, you know, a certain person or a certain entity can't be somewhere without going through the proper constitutional steps, time, manner, place considerations, it could be unlawful, or at least not supported by the law, unconstitutional. And so I just think it may be worth some thought. I don't know exactly how the sheriff wants to implement it. He probably wants to implement it in a very constitutional manner. I just have to say from my research that the reason this statute hasn't been used much, for instance, Richmond's using the unlawful assembly ordinance when they are clearing out people here recently, they're not using this statute. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that it's based on an outdated legal standard that was replaced. So the Clear and Present Danger standard is no longer the standard.
Okay. Madam Chairman, if you can make a comment on that motion, I don't think this is an intention to prevent anybody from exercising their constitutional right, obviously, just if it gets out of control and folks are in danger, I think is what we're trying to prevent. So if there's something that's recommended by our attorney, I would be happy to do that. But my goal in making this motion is that everybody stays safe.
I would say the unlawful assembly statute would cover that. But the sheriff wants something more robust, and I think it's that, it's whatever he's seeking that is...
Or should we do both?
The speech is not definitely a word for me. You would need the firearms that we make, you know, to try to get ahead of that before it's too late.
Madam Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I got no problem with anybody speaking their mind. I have a problem when it comes to violence and endangering innocent people. I've got full confidence in our sheriff. He's done this for a long time, and right or wrong, I'm going to sit here and back him. So I want to give him this, let him use his judgment, and even if his judgment comes up, well, some things hard, she's going to have my support in. Again, I don't have any problem with people talking and saying they believe in this or that, but when it comes to damaging property or people, then I got an extreme problem with it. And I hope you move every one of them, take them to the day. If that comes to that.
Well, we certainly... You have our support, Sheriff, as you know, and I certainly respect our legal counsel as well. I appreciate, you know, giving guidance on that. So with that said, is it your desire to do the motion?
Yes, my motion is with, for the board to grant the sheriff the authority provided in Section 15.2-925 in the Code of Virginia.
I second it, Madam Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
You may want to specify that it's for a specific day, and that's not until you take it away, because I think that the fear is that too much power is granted, and that as Sheriff said initially, he's just asking for that one day so it doesn't become an issue of that.
Do you feel like that it may not trickle over into a day or two after that? You sure you don't would like to have it at least three days?
At least that's why I come in, that we don't know how late, because it's going to start late than what they plan, so...
I mean, you don't know what you're going to encounter, that it may not go another day.
I would feel on that, because I think we just make it the third. We need at least minimum the third and fourth.
Okay.
I'd go the third, fourth, and fifth, I believe. Because as I follow that, I'm sure somebody's going to be unhappy about it. That's just...
So you're going to amend your motion?
Yes. This will be effective July 3 through July 5, 2020.
There's a motion in the second?
I'll second it again.
So we have a motion in second, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff, and we pray for your safety. Thank you so much.
Open range.
It's supposed to be pretty weather. Next on the agenda are year-end matters. The first thing is consideration of the FY 2021 school board budget. And I... And I will, I'll read the resolution. The resolution approving the Smith County School Board Fiscal Year 2020-2021 budget by expenditure classification slash category. Whereas, the Smith County School Board has approved and presented to the Board of Supervisors a budget for FY 2020-21 totaling $52,844,000. And whereas, Section 22.1-1-115 of the Code of Virginia establishes expenditure classifications or categories. And whereas, the Smith County School Board presented the budget in seven categories. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors has the legal authority and ability to approve the Smith County School Board budget by category, Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-94 and 95. And whereas, given the magnitude of the county local funds contribution to the school's budget and to provide increased accountability for the expenditure of such funds, it is appropriate to approve the overall spending plan for the Smith County School Board on a categorical basis. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors duly assemble this 30th day of June 2020, the Smith County School Board FY 2020-21 budget is hereby approved as follows. Administration, attendance, and health: $1,468,814. Food service: $3,773,795. Debt and fund transfers: $2,678,155. Total funds budget: $52,844. Adopted this the 30th day of June 2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Ratliff has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
One second.
We have a second by Mr. Stevenson. All in favors? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Carter, did you have anything to say?
Always.
Okay. We would like to welcome you.
I'm Mrs. Carter, Smith County School Superintendent. I want to thank you for your support for public education, and we spoke in Budget Committee about looking at long-range planning, and we are ready and willing to sit at the table and look at long-range planning for Smith County schools. So again, thank you for your support, and we appreciate all you do for the kids and faculty and the families of Smith County.
Well, no, we want to thank you. We know this has been a challenging year, and even moving forward it's going to be. But thank you and your staff for all that you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'm smiling.
Yeah. Next on the agenda are appropriations. I think that we'll read the appropriations and then do one motion to approve all of them. The first one is total county appropriation, $262,372.54. EDA, $3,549.68. Sheriff Department Fund, $2,695.15. Recovery Court Fund, $991.24. Total General Fund, FY 2021, $70,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Ratliff. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. That completes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in...